Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have no visitors wishing to speak tonight, so we can go right to special committees, which falls into my lap. We did have an audit committee meeting. Mr. Vigilow and I are both on the audit committee along with another community member. We met last week, Tuesday morning. The audit wasn't, or is still isn't, complete yet, but we heard some information from the auditors. Because we've been budgeting so tight lately, the auditors discovered we had not been properly recording when we receive grants and donations that, or field trips, for example, that we don't pay for, but the expense flows through our budget. We should be adopting these grants, accepting them in, and then we're allowed to modify our expenditure budget by those items, which we haven't been doing. So there is an agenda item tonight that we will do that. So we take the income in, but we didn't, we're taking the expense and we're only allowed to expend what the voters approve. So this allows us to equal it out, essentially. So we will be meeting again next week, Thursday, to hear a final, to see the final draft of our audit, which we will then be reviewing at our first meeting in October. And with that, do we have any other committees?
The technology meeting is meeting next week.
Couple items to note. First, tonight, we do have our annual faculty basketball game, and there's a desire, I know, to incorporate that during homecoming week. So I apologize for the conflict in conflicting with the board meeting, but as you can imagine, this time of year with fall sports in full swing, there's a conflict every night of the week. So they tried to pick the one that had the least amount of conflicts for the students and the coaches. So hopefully that, when we're concluded here, for those of you that like to attend, we'll be able to head over there. But our goal in the future is to try to minimize as many conflicts as we can, so I apologize for that. Just before the meeting, we had the opportunity to recognize our new teachers. I'd like to thank our teachers' union, the AEA, for the wonderful reception they put on in the middle school library to welcome our new teachers, and I think there's one in the crowd, maybe another one. So again, welcome to all of our new teachers. We're happy to have you onboard. The next item I'd like to offer here is strategic planning update. As you may recall, we began a comprehensive strategic planning process right at the beginning of my tenure in April, which was really the beginning of the research component of the process. And over the summer, and as recent as yesterday, we have our planning committee together that's looking at the information that's been gathered, eventually leading up towards identifying our key initiatives. So to start off with the basics, you know, what is strategic planning? Well, strategic planning is really a leadership tool. It provides us with an opportunity to focus the district. It provides us with the opportunity to get everybody on the same page, to get all of our oars rowing in the same direction, so to speak, and to make sure that what we're doing is supported at all levels, from the Board of Education and the superintendent, all the way down through the buildings and at all levels in the classrooms. So that's really what strategic planning is. We, as you know, have been working with the Warner Center out of the University of Rochester, and their approach is research-based. They are not giving us a product. It's not going to be their plan. We will own the plan. They're helping facilitate the process with which we are going to identify our key initiatives and our plan. It's an open, transparent process that involves a committee of over 40 stakeholders that represent a cross-section of our community. In addition to that, in our focus groups and interviews, there was over 380 people that had the opportunity to meet with a researcher and offer perceptions about our district. The goal is to challenge assumptions, you know, ask questions, analyze research, so that we can ultimately put together a plan that's going to take us from good to great, as I'd like to put it. So we need to know where we are before we can decide where we're going, so that's where the research comes in. The research is threefold. It's quantitative in the form of a program, staff, and facilities report. There's also a community survey component, which ends today. So if you haven't had a chance to go online and complete that, and you're interested, you still have until the end of the day today. We've had, I think the last time we checked, we had over 300 respondents. So there should be some good data in there. And then there's the qualitative research that's conducted, which includes the focus groups and the interviews. The planning team was formed to involve key stakeholders, and our planning committee at a glance includes members from our teaching staff, so there's about four of them per building, for a total of 16, members of our administrative staff, three board members, two students, parents and community members, folks from the Amherst Youth Consortium, as well as parents and PTA folks, myself and the central office administration, and then our consultant is Dr. Hubing from the Warner Center. So that's the committee, a pretty good cross-section of our school community. And we've had two meetings so far, one of them in August, which was a full-day meeting, and then one last night, which was two hours. And we have one more that's already scheduled coming up in October. The function of the district planning team is to receive and analyze the research, complete a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and eventually identify strategic issues that will become down the road strategic initiatives to address those issues. So the process that we're looking to follow as we move forward is to create a comprehensive SWOT analysis, identify what our desired state is, where do we want to be, identify strategic issues and how we are going to be able to address them, and then ultimately create a plan that we hope to present to the Board of Education sometime around December or January for adoption. And that plan should be a plan that spans around three to five years and really gives us, as a district, a focus and helps us prioritize some of the things we're doing at the table here as a Board of Education. So that's where we stand at this point. That's the first of many updates as it relates to the strategic plan. Do you guys have any questions?
How's the reaction been from the stakeholders? I mean, everybody's feeling it's very transparent, open?
I hope so. I think in the beginning, in early April, because as you can imagine, it takes a while to gather all this information and data and compile it. So we began right in April, and I heard some very positive feedback from folks who were, had the opportunity. I mean, we invited everybody. We didn't limit it. So the people that came and took advantage of the opportunity to sit with the researchers and offer their perceptions indicated that they were thankful for the opportunity to be able to participate and express their concerns and/or, you know, strengths or weaknesses. As of the August meeting, you know, again, this is informal feedback, but I've heard people indicate that they are appreciative, you know, relative, appreciative of the process, that they, the people that are on the committees said it seems to be meaningful work. It seems to be that we're accurately portraying our district. And from what I've seen, everybody seems to be on the same page in terms of committing to continuous improvement and looking towards the initiatives we can adopt that will help us improve what we're doing here.
The local community, you know, around the community talk that I've heard so far is that, you know, it's good, and people were, that are on it were surprised that you saw the good and the bad and everything. It was, there was no trying to hide things and only show the good, you know, from the responses.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I don't know, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I know Mr. Herzog is here and he's on the committee. I mean, he might be able to offer a teacher perspective as somebody who's served on several committees in the district. I don't know if you have anything to add?
The question of it being, the process was, I would say it was definitely transparent. It's been a very positive process. It's been very open. And I think it's allowing us to head in a very good direction, as well as give us a focus of where we're heading in the long term. So I think it's been very, very productive so far.
And I know our administrators are here. I don't know if anyone has anything to add. But, I mean, my perspective pretty much matches that. I think the goal is to, again, be open, transparent, engage a large number of stakeholders, and get all of the oars rowing in the same direction, so to speak. So, any other questions? Well, and like I said, I think we have, in our board topics, we have about, every other month, we have a strategic planning update on the books. And certainly, as we have a plan, we'll look to monitor the implementation of a plan regularly as well. So I hope for it to be on the forefront of everything that we're talking about and doing, not only with our administrators, but also here at the board table. The next item here is our district safety plans. So I've invited Mr. Bellisle, our Director of Human Resources, to give you an update on where we are with district safety plans. As you may recall, on June 1st, the state came out with a new mandate and/or requirement relative to safety plans. Mr. Bellisle came in as the Director of Human Resources and took the plan and the guidance we had from the state and has really pulled together a comprehensive district and building plans. And I'm pleased to see that he's invited Mr. Kramer here from Amherst Emergency Services to co-present with him, because I think that represents the relationships that he's building within the community for our district in a very positive way. So, Mike?
And to be frank, I need to thank a number of people, because I've been trying to coordinate along the way, and now I'm becoming more involved, but Mark Wild, before he left, did a great deal of work behind the scenes. Dennis Quazala, who you may know from Harry Wembowsky, Safety Response Plan, he did a lot of work. That has helped me a great deal, to be quite honest, and I'll show you one of the first slides at the end. And as Tony's pointing out, we tried to, from the start, build, I think, better bridges and relationships with our local services, Snyder Fire, Eggersville Hose. Of course, we've got Dominic from Emergency Services, who I'll introduce himself in a second, we'll do more, as well as, of course, Amherst Police. A lot of you know Paul Alexander, the education liaison officer, and he's done a great deal of work. And they've all shown up at almost every meeting we've had. And it's just, I think it's just, it's added a great deal of, I think, authenticity to the process, but also greater feedback, information. I know we had a meeting over Winry the other day, and offerings, just the feedback, just things we just don't think about in terms of how some of our folks in the community think. So in regards to the building plans, and you see the label up there, we're used to safety plans in the past. Now we're getting used to the words emergency response plans. And those have the greatest impact, of course, in our buildings, and our principals have done a truckload of work, along with assistant principals as well, in developing those plans. And I know you've seen components of those to approve tonight, in terms of adopting those, so we can send them to state and local agencies. But having said that, I want to introduce Dominic Kramer, as we reflect. Maybe you can share a little bit about what you do.
Hi. As I said, my name's Dominic Kramer. I am the Emergency Services and Safety Coordinator for the Town of Amherst. We serve as a liaison to the police and the fire departments. We also, which, we haven't been heavily involved with Amherst schools in the past. We've had good relationships. We've been in and out with different buildings. But I think that our office is a service that hasn't been tapped into yet, and I believe it's been, it's happened. We've got a real good relationship right now with Mike and the building principals coming in. We have a lot to offer to the building-level supervisors, I mean, principals. As far as us, as far as your planning process, first and foremost, I'd be extremely proud of what the district has put forth right now, the amount of planning. Not to take away from any of the other school districts, but I believe this is the first one to be put forth to the board for any approval. And it's been embraced very well by the principals. So I could sit here and talk all night long about this.
You can go ahead. You have a couple of slides, you know. So some of our objectives here tonight, of course, which is familiar to all of you, though I know Mr. Vigilow obviously has some understanding of this with his work, but some of the language and new terminology, running through some of that, as well as what school safety teams look like in the buildings, some of the trainings that have been available, and of course, tonight, adopting those plans. And the district plan in and of itself has been on our website for the last 30 days, and it's supposed to be up there for public review, and as of tonight, it will be exactly 30 days. So generally speaking, emergency response plans came out of the need for more school preparedness. Obviously, we're all aware of the things that happen around the country and those concerns that make the front pages, and we all want to make sure we're safe. And going through that strategic planning process, some of the feedback from kids is they feel safe in our schools. And we want to make sure that that is rooted in reality. We want to make sure that we are truly as safe as we possibly can be. The school improvement, the safety improvement team from the state consists of a number of agencies, including Homeland Security, State Ed, New York State Police, and so on. One of the important things, and you'll notice tonight, I'm not sharing very specific components of the plan, because we have to be very confidential with it. It's not something we want out in the community where everyone can see it. It's certain, I think we can all figure out the safety issues that come as a result of that. But this is the plan that was on our website for district review. This is completely open to the public and can be. It has nothing specific to each and every building. So folks can go on here and just see how we approach safety and what we're going to call incident command, and I'll run through that in a second. Actually, Kramer's going to run through that in a second. But this was the one up on our website, gives an idea generally of how we approach our safety planning, whereas the building-level emergency response plans are much more specific, have all the information about how we're going to take care of the building in case of an emergency, and it breaks down based on the different types of emergencies. So that link at the bottom is a school safety link through State Ed that was built in collaboration, and that is something that's been shared with our building administration and our teachers. Some of the statutory amendment and the changes, because of course, we've always had safety plans, right? Some of the changes have been in terms of some of the policies and procedures specific to contacting parents in the event of a threat of violence, including suicide. Now, in the past, of course, we've typically done that. Our counselors, social workers do what's called a lethality assessment with kiddos if by chance they're demonstrating sort of suicidal statements or tendencies. But the plan says something specific has to be in there. There is also an annual training for staff. We did ours, as some of you are aware, on day two of opening. And those who were not able to attend, we built, essentially took that training and put it in an electronic format. And I'll show you at the end how we're tracking that, so we're making sure that everyone is covered as the year moves on.
Mike, just to add to that, I know one of the new wrinkles is not only do we have to train all existing staff, but any new hires need to be trained within 30 days of hire. So when we see at the end the digital component that Mr. Bellisle and Mrs. Custody have built, I think you'll see how impressive it is to comply with that mandate, because that can be tricky with all the different people we have coming and going.
Take them a turkey and make it less tricky. You have to designate a chief emergency officer. That is me. Mr. Penala has a badge coming up there. Policies and procedures specific to those emergency response plans, those ERPs. And they mentioned you have to have fire officials on teams. And of course, Windermere is governed by Eggersville Hose, whereas the other three buildings are overseen by Snyder. But we also, as I noted, have Mr. Kramer on the team, as well as Amherst Police. So we go a little bit beyond that, because we want different points of view. The importance of consistent language, we see in our essential elements in our classrooms and teaching and learning. The same thing applies to this. If we're all on the same page, we're all saying the same things, we'll all be safer. And you see an example of that on the wall, on the wall, the door right here as you leave. Every building has that exact same template in terms of emergency situations and how we respond. That is actually something the middle school built the other year, though some of the other buildings were using just slightly different. Now, all four buildings use the exact same template. So if you're walking in and out of the building, you always know, you're kind of, you're used to it. You're using the same exact language. 12 drills are required, including four lockdowns and eight evacuation drills. Those include fire drills. Now, the four lockdown drills is a change, that's an increase. And I'll go through that a little more specifically later on. And then it has to be submitted to New York State Police, as well as local law enforcement by October 15th. Essentially, tonight, you'll be adopting these plans. And I will note that some of them, as you saw at the beginning, needed some updating. I will note that all of our team meetings have occurred in the last six days. So there have been some updates in the last six days, in case you go back and look. I know some of our principals and assistant principals have gone back in and entered some of the data we garnered from our first meetings to make sure that those are clean before we approve them and send them on. So I'm going to let Dominic talk a little bit about what this means.
Some of those changes were my fault. When I sat down and I was in those meetings, I offered up suggestions. When you have these plans, to have somebody come in and just say, this is how it's going to be, this is what we're going to do, and then not have any buy-in from the people that are actually doing the work, those plans don't work. So with that, I kind of sat down with the building-level principals and I explained what all this is. The incident commander, I think a lot of people have a pretty good idea of what that is, but that's the overall person that runs everything, coming to, let's take, moving all the students from their site to another site. A big task, right? With that, the incident commander is going to be making sure that the public information officer is getting information to the district plan. That all the logistics, the things that are needed for that move are taken care of, that the planning, people are planning the whole process, finance, everything is tied to money. So documentation is key. What are the operations? Operations, that's your person that's actually right in getting dirty doing things. In the fire service, our operations chief, that's the person that's in the house with the guys that are doing the work, not the actual chief of the department. That guy's outside, he's the orchestra. He's running the orchestra. So with that, we went through and we identified different roles. Safety, a lot of the buildings identified the custodial staff as their safety officers. And one thing that I pointed out is that that may not be the best person for that job. When we go to the buildings for anything, for a fire, for an intruder, or anything, that custodian becomes incredibly important individual. They know the building better than anybody else. If we have to go through and check through a sweep for a suspicious package, they know what's out of order. They hear everything, they see everything. Fires, same thing. They're the ones that know the building the best and they're doing things. So if they're checking the building, they're not going to be able to put their eyes on everybody and take care of business. With this, the incident command system is basically just a tool to keep everything flowing, keep everything moving. The day-to-day operations, you do this. The principals, they all use this. It's just when things escalate, it gets a little bit chaotic. And by doing this planning, identifying different roles, now, when the stuff hits the fan, the principal doesn't have to sit there and say, I need you to go to the school. I need you to take care of this. I need you to document, follow. There's just way too much going on. This was all, this all came about back in the 70s and 80s, all the wildfires in California. They're really good at putting those things out. But when they do that, they've got multiple, multiple agencies that come in, and they all work. They all had different terminologies. They did things differently. It's just, it was a daunting task. So what they did is they put this together, this incident command system, this model. Anybody that comes in, no matter who you are, you can plug into different positions. So now, the government noticed that this is done well. Kind of, they kind of took all this from the military. But now, the government said, this is a great idea. We want a lot of this to be taken care of throughout, in our local governments, all the way down to the lowest level. And the way they get everybody to do that is they say that if you have any federal funding, you need to be well-versed in this. And that, this plan that you're going over right now, incident command is all throughout it. All of the terminologies, compliance, everything, it's all in there. So we may as well get good at it, because they do check. We've had 12 federally-declared disasters in the Town of Amherst. Each time when they come in, they do want to know, do we have our names compared national security management training? We are. I would highly recommend that you folks on the board look into it a little bit. It's an online course, just to give you an idea of what they're going through. And so you know, the buying from the principals has been amazing. Again, you can put it in writing and have this great plan, but if principals don't buy into it, it's not going to, it's not going to work. And they've been fantastic. We've been in almost every building, and actually, a few times, I've been surprised. So that's the next slide. I do that whenever I do my research, I apologize. We have met with most of your buildings. I believe we have a meeting on Thursday, Amherst High School. I have worked with Amherst High School in the past, so I already know what I'm going to get when I go into that building. But I was pleasantly surprised at all the other buildings. I can honestly tell you, I gave you my grad, very proud of what I have seen over the last few days. The planning, the first building we went to, I'm going to pick on it, a small building. And I always try to mess with the people a little bit, as far as to see how prepared they are. I couldn't beat them. Everything I said, he had an answer for. Maybe he's just one of the real good fast talkers, but usually I can see right through it. It's good stuff. It really is. And I really am looking forward to the relationship with the schools. I told every one of the principals, use me. I'm that guy that can get you stuck all the time. They all have my number. The district is going to have my number. It's not a problem for, when something bad's going on, for them to reach out to me and I can give them great information.
And I think it's important enough, too, that incident command structure is at district office, as well as in the buildings. So one of the examples you brought to the day is, if you're the school liaison or the, what was the information?
Public information.
One of the, I think the, I think it was the librarian, wasn't it the librarian at Windermere? I have to speak to channel two. The look on the face is priceless. So if by chance you get to that level, that's something district office in that role would take on. And within the building, that is more of a communication liaison between the principal and whoever's in that incident commander aspect and other folks involved. So it's a similar kind of role, it's just a different layer. I was chatting about that with Tony today, too. So it was just, it was just a cute little anecdote. So emergency response teams, Dominic went through some of these already, but so these are some of the roles that exist within the plans. And so here's what a building example looks like. I put, Mr. Pigeon, you're up there, since we're meeting in a couple of days. This may tweak, as the buildings did, we tweaked some of the names, knowing that some people could build capacity in certain roles better than others, based on what role they're in, what role they might play elsewhere, as Mr. Kramer just pointed out with our custodians. Generally speaking, though, our staff, our principals are sharing with our staff that everyone's really got a role. Whether it's some parents who are in the building potentially, or all the rest of the staff who maybe aren't on the safety team, you still have a role. And this is something that they're communicated with, so that everything can go as smoothly as possible in terms of first aid in their nurse's office, or just general student supervision as teachers. And understanding that's really a role, so you're not running around in circles when something actually does happen. Specific to the drills I mentioned earlier, as I said, we have to have 12 drills as part of the plan. The new legislation talks about having four lockdowns. We had to work closely with Amherst Police to make sure that that happened. As you can imagine, trying to do that in every building in our district, every building in Williamsville, every building in Sweet Home, with the capacity that they have, it's, it'd be difficult. So they had to schedule those practice drills, if you will. So we have two in the spring, two in the fall, two in the spring at each building. And of course, the Amherst Police will be joining us. And we did the high school the other day, and what was great to see in terms of the planning process was, we wanted to make sure we were on our toes, but the police also want to make sure they were on their toes. They're utilizing their folks right on the streets, and they're, they don't know what's coming. So they have to get in there and get used to the buildings. Some of them, like Mr. Kramer, know Amherst really well, but some of these policemen came from out of state or out of town, or they went to West Seneca, and they come in buildings, they don't know our buildings.
You guys changed the building.
For that. So they're coming in, and immediately, at the high school, they said at the end, like, we're so glad we did this. Now we kind of have a feeling of what's inside this building. We drive by it. We don't always spend time inside of it. So that was a pretty impressive insight in my eyes. So that was a pretty impressive insight in my eyes. So here's some of the new terminology, this is actually not new terminology, this is terminology that's been used in the past, but as I shared, that's on that, this is what's in every building and outside, and basically inside, every door throughout the entire building. So anyone that needs to reference that, whether it's a lockdown, a shelter in place, a fire drill, or a lockout, and there's explanations to all of these that I think I had right here. I don't know if we need to go through all of them, but essentially, there's different approaches to keeping the kids safe in the room if there's something going on, keeping the doors locked if there's something going on out in the community that we want to make sure the building's safe, and we may continue instruction, or we may not. And then, of course, evacuations, which we will all, we all have evacuation sites in our community that we go to, and those are in the specific building plans, again, something I wouldn't share in public. But some of the other trainings we provide to our staff, just that you all are aware of, the DOS training, bios prevention training, some of the emergency and fire drills, of course, that we go through, and a lot of that's teaching. And for some of the, maybe the newer kids our district went somewhere else and they heard something different, or they heard Code Red in Ohio, or wherever they, or we've got kindergartners who are coming in and schools completely new to them in some cases, right? Some of them have never walked into a school building before. So it's important for teaching to occur in order to define success. In terms of our training, as Mr. Penella pointed out earlier, what we've done is sort of put this training now in an electronic form, and our teachers who maybe have missed the training, or new hires within those 30 days, can now go online and do this training. The new hires are actually going to do it in my office, where they'll open up a Chromebook and do the, do it right then and there. And what they'll do at the end is they'll see this slide that Mrs. Custody so graciously helped me with, I'm not nearly as technologically savvy as she, and you click here, and you go in, and you can identify that you've gone through all the training, and this goes right into a spreadsheet, and we keep it to make sure that everyone's gone through the training. So yay for Google, and yay for Mrs. Custody. So that concludes the presentation. If you have any other questions for myself or the pro over here?
The eight evacuations, they actually have to go to that off-site place, or they just have to go outside, like?
Those are mostly fire drills, not full evacuations elsewhere. But we do, we will be practicing them. In fact, we've talked, we've been talking with Amherst Police Part II about possibly doing another drill as we did, I think it was about seven years, six, seven years ago. We did an active shooter drill, go through and kind of feel that to make sure we all feel good about these plans being in place when something actually does feel like it's going on. And they've been very open to that in my first discussions, to do at some point next year.
The interesting thing about the fire drills is they're, we're strongly encouraged to do them during, I would call them inopportune times, you know, during lunch or hallway passing time, to really test the planning and coordination to the limits. You know, once the bell rings and all the kids are out of the hallway and in the classrooms and settled, you know, that's when we typically do the drills. So under the new legislation, they encourage you to do it at, I would call them odd times or inopportune times, when folks are in transition. So that'll be interesting to see.
How are the students doing with the change? In terms of how are they, I'm assuming the first one you did, you did it in an inopportune time, so how was the progress on the building?
I have heard on good results from the drills thus far. The kids are pretty on, I know that we're going to be doing more, we come up since we were only 11 days in, I know that we've got a lot more scheduled, and within those plans, they actually have to, sorry, they have to document the dates that they do all those drills. So they are, I know that we've currently had, we had a lockdown drill, and we've had some fire drills, how have they gone, so those of you who have had one?
Very well, yeah, we're in our fourth fire drill, which is, kids are very strong, and they react very well with training, you do silent fire drills, and the kids are excellent.
We had our third fire drill today, and we intentionally did it at a time when children are out on the playgrounds, just to see how our teachers and, in fact, clean staff would react to getting to a designated spot, which may be different from their assigned spot. The comforting thing from my perspective is, through the radio system that we have and the check teachers and the backup check teachers, we can account for 100% of our students in under three minutes.
With lockdowns, you'd be surprised how wonderful the teenagers are. The teenagers would take it seriously, they do. I cleared the second floor of this last lockdown, and, you know, we have classes of 26 kids, I could not see them, they were huddled in corners, taking it seriously, very quiet. So I think, you know, with the planning, the students are well aware, and the faculty especially, really take it very, very seriously, so the kids will follow in kind, they've gone very well.
Does anyone have any additional questions? One of the things I'd like to note, you know, thank you, Mike and Dominic, that was a very informative presentation. I think it's important to note that we get a lot of mandates thrown our way, especially from Albany, and what I'm proud to see happening with this particular one is that it's being embraced, and everyone is invested, and it just goes to illustrate that student safety is one of our top priorities, if not the top priority, and that's very well entrenched within all of our schools. So kudos, good job. Thank you. All that concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, on to new business. Need a motion for new business?
New business items, F1, A through F, 2, A through O, 3, B, G, and I.
Got a second. Okay, any discussion? All right, I, all those in favor of approving new business items, F1, A through F, 2, A through O, and 3, B, G, and I, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Six O's, sorry. Thank you. Any follow-up action?
I just have one to provide information to the board regarding the Emergency Management Institute course. That was Dominic Kramer.
Very great, thank you. All right, we need a motion then to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment of a particular person.
I'll make a motion, we can be in a session. For matters regarding employment of a particular person.
Got a second by Mr. Beck. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.